Move the microphone away from your mouth, but we do want to make sure that everyone can hear what needs to be heard clearly. Uh, and again, thank you all for being here on this evening for our first meeting in the month of October. Um, October is the awareness month for a lot of things, so we are blessed to be here. Madam Clerk?
Michael Rice.
Here.
Billy Bland.
Here.
Vance Williamson. Judy Ward.
Here.
Willie McGee.
Present.
Andre Ruck.
Here.
Paul Choate.
Here.
And Diane Hammond.
Here.
You should have received the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Willie McGee. Andre Ruck.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Vance Williamson. Oh, sorry, he's not here. Paul Choate.
Aye.
Billy Bland.
Aye.
Michael Rice.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
I'm sorry, next on our agenda is invoices for approval, you should have received those as well.
Pay the bills.
Second. Any questions?
I have one, one question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mister Edmonds, uh, I made note, uh, Union County Industrial Waste Recycle. What, what did we clean up for thirty-three hundred dollars? City waste. Is that where we cleaned up around a recycle place? E-waste, okay, all those television sets. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Billy Bland.
Aye.
Paul Choate.
Aye.
Michael Rice.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Next on our agenda is unfinished business, unfinished business, uh, redistricting, uh, Councilman Andre Ruck's. You all should have received an email with the information that he's gonna share.
Uh, we, we all know that, um, we, we in kinda rush for time as, as the next election is upon us. So, the, uh, the guy, Mister Hawkins, I know we were trying to have a special meeting last time, but he was a little busy. He had to go out of town to, uh, speak about redistricting. And so, he was just, just yesterday was able to send me the letter you guys requested from, as invoice. I just kinda wanna read it to you guys and we can make a, a motion after that. He had told me Councilman Ruck's references made to our discussion regarding possible redistricting service for the city of El Dorado. Have considerable experience going back to the nineteen eighties with redistricting city wars, corn court districts and school districts. Cities of the first and second class are required to have wars of substantially equal population. And those wars should be drawn in a manner consistent with both equal protection and voter rights act considerations. This is particularly important if there are war, uh, if there are by war elections, and that's what El Dorado does have, a by war election. As I understand it, the city will be participating in the partisan primary election in May, and we have due plan on doing that. And that a determination has already been made that redistricting is in fact needed in El Dorado. As such, I would recommend that your ward redistricting be completed at least thirty days before the filing period begins. I did, uh, go to the, um, call the county clerk today to find out when the filing deadline was, and they still don't have the dates yet. Um, as far as the cost of providing redistricting services, I would charge no more than six hundred dollars. If you elect to accept my offer of assistance, please email the existing ward boundaries and the address of existing city council members. And his precaution was to make sure that none of us, as he redistrict, none of us get caught up in, put some of us in the same ward or, and it misses. So, we, we wanna make sure that I get a copy of everybody's address so I can send that to him. And then, he, as he draw to, uh, the districts then, it'll make sure it's fair based on where we all live as well too. So, that's important as well. So, that's, that's all I have, and he just waiting on us to make a motion to go ahead and approve it. And he said he had it done about a month before.
I just have a comment that I mentioned to you beforehand. I appreciate, we all appreciate your taking the lead and, uh, checking this out. I do have a question. In this last communication he sent to you today, he was referring one month before the primary, which would be in May. But I understood when we had spoken before that the law, we had to have this done before January one.
Yes, ma'am. It was just, it was just a mis mistake, you misread it. It was saying a month before re, um, the filing date to file, to run files.
Yeah. Well, I had also talked to, uh, the gentleman over in Monticello that you talked to.
Sure, James.
And, yeah, James, and he, he said it was the state law through the Secretary of State's office that it had to be done by January one.
This will be, this will be done by December.
It will be, okay.
Yes, yes, it's, um, they hadn't, they hadn't came with the filing, the filing date yet, mama ward. And, um, and so, I called, like I said, I did call over to the, to the, um, clerk's office, and they said that they'll be having those dates for us. But he said he would definitely have it a month before those dates.
Because all he needs, I think, is just our information that we're gonna send to him, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and just okay that he is charged six hundred dollars.
He won't have to come here, is what I'm saying, Hilton. Or will he?
He's gonna send two ladies, um, that working on his staff, they're gonna come down and they're gonna come speak for us as they're giving us updates, as they're, um, accumulating information and data. And that's where we at.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Will we get a, uh, more than one map? As, it seems like it's customary to get three different maps and then we vote on the one that we, uh, council gets to select one. That's the way it happened ten years ago.
Yes, sir. And I, um, I mentioned that to him, and, um, he did say that we're blessed even have this, this services. Since we, we took so long, El Dorado was the last city to pretty much reach out, everybody else had reached out, um, and gotten their services, uh, set in stone and set in date. And they did reach out to us in February. He, once we, uh, went that far, then we lost our time to deal with him. So, now, when I went, I called Springdale, Springdale was lucky enough and blessed enough to say, even after we do Lake Village and after we do all the school districts, we'll come down to El Dorado and take care of El Dorado. But other than that, we don't have anybody else to come to El Dorado to do it. But I, I did mention it to him that Miss Ward would like more than one different copy.
Like an option, okay.
Yes, sir, I did mention that to him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I make a motion, we proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Billy Bland.
Aye.
Paul Choate.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
And Michael Rice.
Aye.
Under new businesses, Mrs. Jones or someone from Habitat for Humanity here?
Yes, you all, can you hear me?
Okay.
Uh, my name is Jennifer Hamilton, I am the president of the El Dorado Habitat Board, uh, along with a couple of more officers on the board. And I think we may have residents on what I'm here for this evening to address. The El Dorado Habitat Board, uh, was donated some property from the Reynolds family several years ago. And it's over in the Askew Edition over off Petroleum and East Second Street. And apparently, as of right now, we have, uh, three residents, a seven year resident, a three year resident, and as of August first, we have a one year resident. Our purpose and goal was, is to clean up in that area, to have a cul-de-sac, a little subdivision, where families can bring their children and be safe and have a decent home. We're asking the city and the support of the local, uh, police to help us with this. On September the twenty-fifth, which was a Sunday morning, around four AM, there was a shooting. And like I said, there's single families, there are husband and wife, and they have small children there. The homes are well-built construction, uh, with new, uh, central heating air, trying to provide a affordable home for families. We're asking if we can get some help and support pertaining to the, uh, lighting maybe, possibility of installing streetlights at the corner of Petroleum and East Second, and also Ramsey Street. Help with cleaning ditches on the north side of East Second Street and Petroleum. Increase the presence of police cars maybe driving by the area at least once every shift. Also, we're asking for engaging of community watch programs or something that will help keep it busy over there, active, something positive there. The residents are very concerned after, on Sunday, September twenty-fifth. I think we may have presented pictures of some shootings, um, where the bullets hit, uh, with the homes. And so, we just have a general concern, we want to clean up that area, that was our goal, so we can get rid of drug trafficking and whatever may be going on that's not legal in that area. And clean it up and make it to be a nice, safe place for these homes. We have two more homes that we're planning to build in that cul-de-sac. Right now, we're a leery about moving forward with it because of these concerns, so we just ask that, uh, for support, any suggestions? If you all can help us with this because the residents have contacted us out of genu- genuine concern and for their safety. And we have one that's considering even moving, you know, getting their children and uprooting and not living there. And trying to find another place that's safe and that they can afford.
Hi, ma'am, can I? Uh, this question's from Mister Edmonds. How hard is to get some streetlights over there?
Isn't it one every two blocks or something like that?
Every three hundred, three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet, okay.
All right. If, if you're talking about an end of a street down there for a cul-de-sac, I would think that would be necessary and then whatever. Uh, and then, do we know who owns the ditches? Are they city drainage ditches? Do we have any idea? Okay. If, if, if there's stormwater drainage or something like that, I, I'm, I'm confident we, we can do something there. Uh, but cities, you know, Public Works is gonna have to come look at it, see what they can do. Uh, I have the most, I have utmost respect for the efforts placed by Habitat for Humanity. You guys do great work.
Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton, have you reached out to Public Works or the Police Department on any of these matters?
We haven't, but one of the residents have contacted law enforcement.
Okay.
Law enforcement.
Also, Ms. Jones told me she had.
Oh, Ms. Rita.
She says she had calls and didn't get much response.
Mhm.
I'm sorry, I mean, but, and, but she, one of your.
Residents, yeah. Homeowners.
That's something I've been fighting for years, we, we all got to get involved, I don't care what side of town it is.
Exactly.
I, I mean, we can't let a handful of people actually take over our community. But when the police come out, we gotta help them. We, we gotta get involved. And I know it's hard, but it's gonna take all of us, even us who's on the other side of town.
Exact.
Because we can't avoid our town, we can, we gotta take our towns back. That way, that means that we all have to get involved. We all have to get out there and, and drive these neighborhoods that some people don't wanna come through. Because I live in, I live in these neighborhoods. So, I'm saying that we can come together, sit down, maybe have some dialogue on a regular basis.
Mhm.
Just not when a situation happen and react. Maybe we can be proactive, like Mister Choate said, get some lights over there, whatever need to be done. But it's everybody's problem in this city, just ain't one side of town. That's what I'm trying to say, ma'am, and some of us, we just gotta get involved.
Exactly.
I also spoke with Chief Hickman, uh, concerning the situation after, I believe Ms. Jones called my office concerning it. So, he, he is aware of the situation as well.
Okay. Let me finish what I was gonna say. Um, I feel certain that Public Works will go out there and look at it and, and take care of whatever is necessary over there. And if Chief Hickman is aware of a problem over there, I know that he would personally, you know, have his officers go over there and respond to it. And the other thing is, in that area, have you, uh, I'm assuming that you contacted your council members on this? On the, the problems? Ms. Jones?
Uh, this happened, the first problem, this was really the biggest problem that we've had, uh, that was really concerning, uh, was, just happened just recently on September twenty-fifth.
Mhm.
And that's when one of the residents, homeowners contacted Ms. Jones about it. And then, she reached out to, um, one of the council members about it.
Okay. I, like I said, um, and we're, we're all wanting all of El Dorado to be a better place to live, so.
Exactly.
But I feel like your council members and all, any of us would be happy to come out and help you with this, with, and also Public Works and, and Chief Hickman.
Okay.
And also, did anyone mention to you neighborhood watch programs where the neighbors get together and look out? Is there still an officer in charge of that, Chief Hickman? Okay.
Well, we could, we could guide you through meetings that you hold with people in the neighborhood. And, and our neighborhood, all we've done is gotten a list of each neighbor, their phone number, if you leave town, I'm gonna look out for your house. That type of thing, or if I know you're, uh, working at night, we watch out for each other. And, and we report any suspicious activity. And when the neighbors work together, that neighborhood watch works extremely well. We could guide you through that.
Exactly, thank you. Uh, we encourage and we invite you in one. Um, El Dorado Habitat Board members, we meet the third Monday of each month. And anytime that you all would like to come, we will send out an invitation for you all to come attend the meeting, meeting with us and to discuss some of these issues. Like you said, not only in that area, any area, uh, because we have plans for other areas that we want to build. So, we're looking forward to doing that and because the homes are nice homes, beautiful homes, insulated, good homes. And we want these families to feel safe and secure and want to continue to, want to do better, do more. Because we've had, we have homeowners who have children, single parents, and their children have went off to college, and they are doing great. And they are doctors, they are, uh, not only doctors, in education, they move forward, and they have, was raised up in a Habitat home.
Ma'am, I, I would like to offer my services to Congress, not only talk to your members, but talk to your homeowners on, on some things that they, they might can do. To kinda help out and things that we, I mean, it's, it's gonna take a whole effort to take back our community and our kids that live in a war zone.
Yes, yes.
Can I say this one thing for you? I, I'm just gonna say this, ma'am, um, thank you for coming, coming before us. This, um, this, this, I, I, first of all, I'd like to thank Councilman McGee, Councilman Choate, Councilman Hammond, and Councilman Ward for responding to you in, in, in such a way of gentleness and tenderness and trying to come up with a solution for you. Uh, the new census, we down to seventeen thousand, seven hundred people. And the reason I, the reason I personally as a councilman, as a leader of this community, the reason I think is because we're, we're not listening enough to you guys on the things that you guys experiencing in these communities. And I don't believe that we are addressing the issues. And if, I, I tell them all the time, I, I have a bachelor's in business management. We have seventeen thousand, seven hundred people, each one of you guys are the customers. And when you come before us telling us the products that you're trying to buy from us, we need to be giving you guys the products that you can buy, which is safe neighborhoods, which is, you know, secure things that we can offer you guys. So, we, we gonna get better, and I just like the fact that they, at least they were listening to you today. And they was coming up with solutions, they was nice to you today, and I'm, I was appreciative, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I was just impressed with the fact that they seemed like they were concerned about you. And, but we do need to address the issues. We do need community centers in our community. We do need to do, do, need, need crime prevention issues to, to, to get these kids some deterrents, because they don't have anything to do in this community. They don't have anything to do in this community.
And, and we don't bring them to the table and ask them, what can we help them?
And that's.
Trying to survive in these communities, that we know drug-infested.
Exact.
Crime-infested.
I just wanna see us do better by serving the needs of the people who live in the city of El Dorado. When we less serve, we can do it, we can actually come up, use some of the money that we got.
Mhm.
Yes, we got eleven million dollars in our, in our tax. Yes, they rolled over from last year, they, they don't like for me to tell you the numbers, 'cause they don't want you to know all this money just sitting there, and then we're not really doing nothing with it and serving the people of our city of El Dorado. So, we have a lot of money, like, I think a million dollars in the A and P commission from what someone told me. And I might, I might not be true about that, we have a lot of money sitting there that we could be solving issues.
Mhm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton, um, you said y'all meet on the third Monday, but what time and where?
At noon, twelve o'clock noon. Right now, we're meeting in the Simmons Bank Conference Room.
Okay.
Uh, but, yeah, as a matter of fact, we got one coming up.
Okay.
Third Monday at twelve o'clock noon. And we provide lunch.
And I would ask that also, um, if you could call City Hall and get our emails.
Yes, ma'am.
And email us and let us know when your meetings are.
Will do.
Okay.
All right. I appreciate you all for your time.
You said lunch is provided, do you need to RSVP, or you just make enough for whom?
Yes, we will, uh, send out the email, and if you will RSVP.
If you send it to me, I'll disperse it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And, and thank Ms. Jones.
Now, you mentioned that there were some residents here. Would you all like to stand, the residents that are here? Okay, okay. We thank you for being here.
Corey Williams, that's my name. Um, I've been back there for three years, and, um, we've been complaining about the area for a long time since we've been back there. But, like, you know, we called the police, do what we supposed to do, um, for us doing that and trying to get them to come there. They do come sometimes, but, you know, it's like, it's very random that they do come back through there. But that current night was like one of the most, scariest nights of my life. They were shooting right by my bedroom window. In my daughter's room. So, like, when the bullets went through my fence, if I didn't have the fence, it would've went to my, my baby's room and my bedroom. So, I'm just explaining how it happened. When it happened at four in the morning, we were asleep. I'm hearing like ten shots, fifteen shots. I pushed my wife out of bed, grabbed my daughter out of her room, I mean, this is how surreal it was. And go outside, my bullet is real, I mean, the fence is real with bullets. I mean, it was just, like, I just normally don't say anything, I just call Ms. Rita, let her know kinda like what's going on. But that night, it just changed everything for me. So, I just wanted to come to the city council, 'cause we do attend sometimes trying to be positive. I mean, we pick trash up in our community, just me and my wife, no one else, and my kids. We do that, and the streetlight situation, I had already called the energy company, they coming out in a couple of weeks, and I was paying for the streetlight. I was gonna get it paid for because I'm just like, it's, it's just, you know, I don't, I don't, it isn't, it didn't matter to me about who was gonna do what. I just feel like we gotta make the steps first, like y'all men, gentlemen said. So, we making the steps, and it's been long overdue. Like I say, this has been going on for, I've been back there for three years, and it's been going on for just about as long as I've been back there. You know, and like I say, this ain't the first shooting, this is the first time that it's done hit my home or hit my property. But I should be on the El Dorado police list like seventy times for calling the police, 'cause I called that much, literally. I mean, if it ain't loud music, if it's not people blocking my drive, don't wanna move, being disrespectful, parking beside the house where it's nothing but pitch black dark years, where I just called the city, I mean, the energy company to come put a security light out there. And I wanted it to be the brightest light they can put, 'cause I have cameras, I sent them to the detectives of the, of the shooting, 'cause I have it on surveillance. So, I just wanna say thank everybody who was trying to get involved to help us, and may God continue to bless us all.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, now, that's a young man crying out for help. Crying out for help.
So, next up, Chief Hickman? And I know you're on the agenda for the civil traffic warden, but I don't know if you wanna speak to the issue that was, that we were just talking about or not?
Well, you know, to be honest with y'all, which I knew how, uh, to respond to it, because the more I say, the more it hurts what's already been done. Because I don't know about what Mister McGee's talking about, not much of a response, I got a.
Ms. Jones said that.
Okay.
That's what she told me, when she called me.
What? And I was told also that there were three messages left for me, and I still haven't found out where those messages are. Um, but I put our expert in touch with her, and believe me, he's a lot smarter than I am with regard to things like that, a lot better informed, which was the best thing we could've done. Uh, when you spoke to me, and maybe I shouldn't even be saying this, but it gets a little old, uh, being, uh, on the outside of a discussion. Is the moment you, I spoke to you and hung the phone up, I made contact with two of the three divisions. Made contact with the third division within a day of that, all about that one thing. In the patrol room, I have three messages that are up on an area, I have half of a board back in the patrol room, that area is one of them, that's one of those three messages. So, there's been a considerable amount, and probably public meetings hurt our ability to do much over there worse than anything. And I'm just telling you and being honest about it, what we do and what we do best is not transparent at the moment, it becomes apparent later. And, and the more talk, the more publicity, the less leverage we have, and that's just the nature of our job. So, one thing that is encouraging, and I have to congratulate, and I'm grateful, is the passion and the desire to do that. But what we have here is systemic all across this city. We have areas like that everywhere, and we have a limited amount of resources, and we have a limited amount of people working and all. Just yes, the day before yesterday, they arrested some people that had committed thefts across several different places, thousands of dollars of things. And the detective division was tied up the entire next day serving multiple search warrants, and at one place, they recovered about two truckloads worth of stolen material. It's just that we're spread thin. And, and we're, and we're in a situation probably better than most, but we're still have some manpower shortages. And recruiting nationwide, I've seen it down as much as eighty percent. So, and we're having trouble with recruiting too. So, we're trying to think of new ways to do that. Uh, we believe that, and it is much, much, uh, thanks to the council, uh, that we've gotten a, we think we have a very good product here in terms of the department. And, uh, we have some things that would, uh, be very, very attractive to, uh, law enforcement, uh, people that wanna make a career out of it. And, uh, and also, they, and we're trying to make that better and better and better. I wanna finish that little section by this, and I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable, 'cause I don't know exactly how much to say, how to respond to things and stuff like that. But, this is a mutual, for mu- mutual benefit for all of us. There's not anything in us that don't, does, does not want to help. But we have that thing called the Fourth Amendment that restricts us, we have to play by rules. And when we play by rules, oftentimes, things move very, very slow. Whereas, we would like to do thing, even we know things that we can't act on without following proper procedures, which I'm a stickler on, because then you don't have to back up and also. Uh, I hope that was a decent response to that. I am encouraged by the passion and everything else, but we cannot be everywhere at every moment. And I do know that all three divisions have been engaged with this issue. And we got some secondary complaints over some things when things had already been done, they just didn't know it. And that happens, so. Good question. Is the prosecuting attorney's office, uh, working with you on this? Do you find him favorable to work with? Oh, he's been great to work with, but, but normally what happens is on the front end of something, uh, that doesn't happen. It's more like once a case is, has, and arrests have been made, or you're in the process of developing something. Now, I'm sure the narcotics division is much more closely dealing with him, you know, with networks and things like that, whereas I wouldn't have any expertise in that. I've not, not ever done that, but he's been great to work with.
Was, was I clear with you where I got that from?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I, I, yes, sir, thank you. Um, now, on the second thing, uh, the civil traffic warden, what I wanted to kinda do is to update, and I really don't know exactly how to go about this, I'll try to be brief, 'cause I've taken time here. Um, is that we, we have what we think is probably the best system to do, the best thing that we can find. I'm not ready to say it's a sole source, it may be something we'll have to put out to bed, I don't know yet, but it's the best thing that we've, we've been able to find. But it will cost a little bit, but it's not cost prohibitive, I don't think. What it, uh, if it was, and I don't know the word, is it amortized or whatever it is, if it was equally spread out, um, it would be fifteen thousand dollars for the first three years, and then a little over three thousand after that. And then, four dollars and twenty-five cents per ticket. Let me tell you what that offers. Um, that offers the equipment, uh, both the hardware and the software, to where, on the parking, what you can do is you take a photograph of the vehicle, you log the stem position on the, on the wheel. So, you don't have to, you know, touch the. touch the car in any way. And in three hours, you have an alarm. And it tells you that, to go back and check that car. So, it's a very objective measure. And then, it actually provides the license information through a software, uh, package into a hardware that they actually have a Bluetooth printer that goes with it, that will print the citation out, and all. And it, and then the information relative to the, uh, to the evidence goes into a cloud, and it's maintained. So, uh, roughly five thousand dollars a year, first three years. Then, uh, after that, you'd have a little over three thousand dollars a year, and then you would have four twenty-five, four dollars twenty-five cents per citation, is what it would be. And that's the, that's the fee for the cloud, for the, for the accessing the, uh, database, for the, for the license information, things like that. But it, it provides a very, very objective standard, uh, for when somebody writes a citation. It's not, it doesn't get into, I think, so much of the, well, I was there, and I moved, and then I came back. The stem, stem's not gonna be in the same place. Uh, and also, it stores that information in a place to where it's isolated, not manipulated, and all, to be, I think, presented to the court in those cases where that would be necessary, and all. It's a little bit more expensive if they maintain the records and stuff, and I don't think that's necessary. I think we can do that in the house, and all.
With staffing issues? Being, you know, you'd said short, shorthanded.
Mr. I think you...
Staffing issues? Is it something that you're gonna be able to, be able to staff, you think? Or would it be...
Oh, well, that, the, the civil traffic warden is gonna be a civilian position.
Okay, so you...
What, what happened, you know, with, with the, uh, until we had the budget finalized, we couldn't go ahead and, and interview to hire, because the, and in the hiring process, once someone is decided upon, which I wanna be real careful about that, because I think it's gonna be a real important, we get the right person to do that. So, it's, it's gonna be not, it's not law enforcement officer, be a civilian. Uh, but they will have authority to do certain traffic things.
Is it a full-time job?
Yes, sir. And, and it'll be, uh, and it requires training. We've gotten through standards, our training curriculum approved, so that, so that's ready to go, once we get them. And then also, part of the package of this program and the citations and all that involves training that they will do. And so, we, we would need to bring that person on board and train them how to do that. I would also, I'd feel better if I went and discussed with our, uh, judge, if he was comfortable with the process, make sure that we're as airtight as we can be going into, to a situation that there's some very strong, you know, desires to, to make it work.
I, I'm, I'm assuming, which is not necessarily a good thing, that this technology has been well, well-vetted?
My understanding is that favorable use is the same thing. So, and, and, uh, Lieutenant Russell has looked over several. And as far as cost, and then also the overall, uh, product, uh, I'm not sure that anything else actually does all of this that this does. And then, in that case, it would be a sole source, but I don't know that. But, uh, that's where we are in the process, but I kinda wanted to, before we say, hey, we, we can buy this, and then we can hire someone, and train them with it and everything else. And I bet it with a, I wanted to make sure that the council thought that that was a, you know, worthwhile venture to invest that much money. The way it's actually broken down, in one way, is like eight thousand something one year, and then the rest of what would equal to about fifteen something is divided up over the next two. It goes down a little bit, you know, each time.
So, do you enter into a, a three-year contract with them initially?
You know what, I, I, I'm sorry, I can't actually...
Well, if it's...
How binding that is, I don't know.
If it's four twenty-five per citation, you gotta have a long-term contract, don't you?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, they want fifteen thousand, so...
Yeah, you're talking the initial purchase of the equipment, you're talking about.
That's about over three years.
Right.
Right, and then the four twenty-five per citation, what it is, what it's worth.
Did you say five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, three thousand? What did you say?
Uh, if they had, if they just spread it out, there's a way where you can go five, 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 and then it's three the next two years.
Right.
Um, or it, it's eight, and then I forget what the numbers are. Uh, you have to forgive me, I, I came back in a run to get over here, I needed this.
Is this a ticket right in this downtown?
It is.
The civil traffic situation, where, where's this position gonna be?
Downtown, it's a downtown.
Parking attendant, so...
The monitor parking place.
So, I'm, I'm, I gotta go and ask you, so we was all concerned, I was all, I know me and Michael Rice were talking about it one time, I wanna get your opinion. You think that this the most cost-effective in hiring than getting, uh, meters?
I don't know how much meters cost, sir. I don't have any idea. I, I don't know.
So, we gonna cost revenue, it's gonna cost us revenue to have to make this, but we can make revenue with the, with the downtown meters. I'm trying to see, are we going a right strategy with this? You see what I'm saying with that?
Well, that, that, that certainly the council's decision.
I mean, I think we need to be trying to accumulate revenue for people parking. I don't, I mean, persons going down there marking cars all day, I think we should, I don't know, that's just my, my one little opinion. I just think we need to be trying to accumulate revenue from the parking. That, that can pay for the individual. Right now, who's gonna pay for that, that's gonna come out of the city budget, right?
Yes.
The individual pay for that, we, if we, if we do meters, then that, that particular meter will pay for that particular salary. I just think we need to approach this more intelligent, more strategically.
It was discussed...
Not, not, not you, chief, I'm talking to the council.
Well, sure, and, and, and it, obviously, the decision rests with y'all. Just, if we were gonna proceed this way, this is where we are, I'm just trying to bring you to that.
Councilor Rux, it was discussed in one of the council meetings. I think this was the decision that the council came up with. And the meters and other software were, were discussed as well.
If I could just add on to that, from years past, Mr. McGee would remember, this is years ago. We had meters, and then the meters were taken out, and, and one of the reasons for not using meters is the, it's a huge expense now, anything like that that you install. We had checked that out, but that's been years ago, and that was why, why we got away from theers. But this was when I was first on the council, so I'm not real fresh in my memory, but I do know that much.
But we...
He talked about eighteen thousand and something?
But there was also the, we even discussed what I brought up in one of the advisory meetings that we had with the, with the downtown business owners, and the people that were on that committee, and there is software as well, we talked about that too. But it was the general consensus of the council to go with the traffic warden. Any other questions?
Well, to finish up, what do you, what do you want from us here? A consensus?
To, to proceed, uh, or, uh, if, if, do you wanna, are we gonna vet it?
I'd, I'd like for you to concede, uh, cons- uh, continue with this. I'd, I'd like the route you're going. I'd like to make a motion to allow the chief to pursue this method of, uh, implementing a park. You know, we've got the, we, we have the ordinance in place, we have the money allocated for the civil traffic warden, and, uh, if, you know, this is a capital expenditure that, uh, I believe will free up parking downtown, and we'll get what we need, so I make a motion, we allow the chief to move forward with this.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Michael Rice. Billy Bland. Judy Ward. Willie McGee. Andre Rux. Paul Choate. And Diane Hammond.
And the next step would be is, once we either come to a point where we have to put it out to bid, or we find it's a sole source, then it will be a, a purchase request, and I'll bring it for you on the equipment. And then, and once we get to that point, then everything will start moving a lot more quickly. But I do wanna be real careful about who we put down there, because it's gonna be as much of a PR as it is a functional position.
Thanks for your help.
And before you leave, uh, chief, just, just to be clear, is there a timeframe on, on when this position will be filled?
I do not know.
No?
I do not, I do not know. Um, a lot of it's gonna depend upon, on the applicants. You know, when we get somewhere, the thing might be, you know, a good...
Are you waiting on to the software before you put it out or advertise it for?
I wanted to wait and see what method we were gonna go with, 'cause that's gonna be part and parcel of the training and everything else. And there'll be, uh, probably, I would imagine, two, three weeks of training anyway, you know, initial to it. So, we wanna get, uh, at least that lined up before we...
And this...
Got a person standing waiting on it.
Okay. And this salary has been made a part of the police department's budget. And so, if I remember correctly, or if I understood correctly, you're saying that this software, Mr. Choate, will come from the capital?
We will have, we will have to fund it through some form, and yes, we will probably have to make a capital expenditure to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Where would that money come from? Reserves?
Next on our agenda is clarifications, and, and it is some, a few things that I'd like to clarify. And not to, I hate to use the term beat a dead horse, but I think we've gone over it a couple of times. At the end of the last council meeting, there was some questions asked, and I just wanted to clarify some positions on it. Is Mr. Moore here? Okay. Almost disappeared. Oh, he's here. Mr. Moore, if you don't, if you don't mind, if you'll, if you'll come, if you come forward. There were, um, some questions, and I, I don't wanna say, um, accusations, but I do want, want things to be made clear, because sometimes things get changed around, or transformed a bit, or sometimes maybe our memory is not as clear. And then, I guess there are times when all of the information has not been put out, um, so to speak. But there was the question about, um, Mr. Moore's position as HR director, and it not being approved. Not a question, it was stated that it had not been approved. Um, and I, I wanted to go back, because I think on the last, during the last council meeting, I did go back as far as June, as far as the time when those positions were announced. I will say, um, that it was a bit concerning to me that everyone's memory is not the same. But I, I wanna go back as far as May, and I think it's important to set the timeline, to go back as far as May. In May, uh, May twentieth, to be exact, we had a payroll HR administrator, I believe was the title. And she and the treasurer were terminated. And at that time, it was, I thought, that the person that was already here, already working, who at the time was working in the collector's position, it was my intention to move her to the treasurer's position, and then we would fill the other positions. Well, by ordinance, and that ordinance was sixteen eighty-six, that was not something that I was allowed to do, as far as the mayor. The treasurer was to be appointed, and that ordinance came into play under Mayor Beard. Now, the two mayors after him, uh, Mayor Dumas and Mayor Hash, both hired treasurers. So, I was not aware of the ordinance, and I, I do take responsibility of not being aware of the ordinance. However, the ordinance does exist, and so the council was to appoint the next treasurer. Well, my thought, again, would have been the collector. So, I did present her qualifications for the position, and that was done on May the twenty-ninth. Well, that did not go forward, because there was no second to the motion to appoint her. Immediately after that, we advertised for the position. She was appointed to the position on June the tenth. So, that freed up, or allowed us, we had to hire a collector, and myself and Mr. Edmonds, the Public Works Director, we had talked about the fact that neither the Water Utilities or the city had an actual HR director. And we both needed a payroll clerk, that they would, and they, meaning the Water Utilities, would fund the position for the payroll clerk, and that the city would fund the position for the HR director. And they would work for both places. They were announced along with the new collector and the new receptionist on the second meeting in June, which was June the eighteenth. Again, as I mentioned at our last council meeting, there was no question as to the how, but it was stated that they will be working at both places. Um, there was no question as, as to who was going to do what, but I, I would think, because the payroll clerk was housed at the Water Utilities Office, and that the HR director was housed here at City Hall, if there were any questions concerning that, that it would almost be obvious who was paying who. Um, it was later on, I think, that it was mentioned to me, I, I wanna say around November, because they both were working in those capacities. In November, it was brought to my attention, uh, that some of the council members were concerned about the positions. And it was told to me by Mr. Williamson, and I hate to, to reference him, and he's not here, but that it was talked about, but as long as it fit into the budget, it didn't matter. Well, again, Mr. Edmonds and myself, and even Mr. Moore, had talked about it, and the way it was designed, it did fit the budget. Um, it was not until, um, there were ordinance clarifications made on December the tenth, during our meeting in December, where ordinances were clarified, that the treasurer, that ordinance, sixteen eighty-six was clarified to say that not only would the treasurer be appointed by the council, but they would be appointed, managed, and dismissed by the council. Uh, after that, um, I do believe it was on the the twenty-fifth, January the twenty-fifth, we had a meeting. Now, let me back up just a little bit, because I wanna put all the facts out there. It was also in November where it was said to me after the fact, because there was an issue with the Christmas bonuses. And the Christmas bonuses not going out, um, when the council had assumed that they would go out. They wanted them to go out for Thanksgiving, and they were not ready at the time. So, I did, um, share that information with the council members, and said at, at that time that the payroll clerk and that the HR director were working on making sure that those things were done correctly. It was after that time that Mr. Williamson, again, I'm, I'm addressing him, and he's not here, mentioned to me about that process not going as quickly as, as they thought it should have. I said to him again, that the payroll clerk was working not only for the city, but for the Water Utilities as well. He said at that time that he was not aware that the payroll clerk was working for both places. Again, I reminded him about the meeting in June where they were announced. He mentioned to me, um, later on in January, that he thought that the payroll clerk was helping here. Um, before we got a new payroll clerk, um, Ms. Lori Tissue, who's also employed with the Water Utilities, she helped with the payroll, and so he said that he thought that for seven months, that the payroll clerk was helping with the city. I do understand that there, that ordinance that was clarified in January, it does state that there is no co-mingling of funds. And so, my question even to that was, if she could be helping for seven months, that would still be considered as co-mingling? I didn't understand why that would make a big difference. And again, I, I take responsibility for what I don't understand. So, it was not mentioned again until, uh, we had to hire, and that was on the twenty-fifth, at a finance committee meeting, where Ms. Hammond said that I had to hire, uh, the city had to hire its own payroll clerk. And as I mentioned in the last council meeting, at the time, Mr. Moore's position was in the budget. It was a line item in the budget. It was not stated that they had to be put back together like they were previously. It was that I already had the HR director's salary in my budget, that I had to hire or add the payroll clerk's salary as well. So, with all of that being said, it was not brought to my attention, um, that the HR position was not approved until after that. It was stated in an email that it had never been approved. But I don't, I don't know how it would need to be approved if it already existed. So, again, I'm just trying to clarify the situation. Also, I might add that in March, that, on March the ninth, there was a meeting, a special call meeting with the Arkansas Municipal League. Mr. Lanny Richmond came down and discussed the issue that we not, we had not, at that time, passed the budget. Uh, even the ordinance clarifications was brought up, as well as the two positions. All of that was discussed. On March the ninth, our treasurer at the time, Ms. Dean, was given two weeks to get, I'm gonna say, the books in order, so that they would have the year end for twenty twenty to compare for the budget for twenty twenty-one. Uh, on March the tenth, there was a called, for March the tenth, there was a called finance and council meeting. It was called for the auditorium, and it was to happen immediately after the Public Works meeting. In that meeting, it was not a finance or council meeting, but in that meeting, it was actually a meeting to terminate the treasurer. She was not given a reason, it was that she had the option to either be terminated or to resign, and when she didn't either, I would assume that that meant that she was terminated. There are always things that are said, but the whole story is not always told. There were even some accusations after that, that there was a laptop missing. And I just wanna share, because I think things need to be clarified. When Ms. Dean was terminated at the auditorium, she rode over with me. She and I went to the meeting together. No one at the meeting... No one at the meeting asked her for her keys, no one asked her for any other things that she might have that belonged to the city, and because no one else asked her for those items, she gave them to me. So I received her keys and the laptop. I'm- I'm not understanding where the rumor came about, other than social media presence about the laptop being missing. The laptop is where it has always been since she gave it to me, and that's in my office. I thought it was strange that people made a lot of accusations about things without actually asking the question. Back to the situation with the HR Director, it was not mentioned, again, even about the payroll clerk's, uh, salary, until I spoke with- until we had a meeting, and it was discussed in the meeting, because it was not agreed that those positions be split out, because myself and the Public Works Director made the agreement, that it was not agreed that I was to pay, or the city administration's budget was supposed to cover both salaries. Not even a portion of that was paid by the Water Utilities. And that was decided, I believe, by Mr. Williamson. Again, he is not here. So after that meeting, I did speak with Mr. Williamson, because I wanted to share with him some of the information that I had gathered from the staff here concerning the position of the treasurer, and some of the things that the treasurer was doing that they were not aware of, because Imogen Skrogan's was coming over, or they were going to take on the mission of doing, in two weeks, what Ms. Dean had been asked to do. That was told to us on March the tenth, I believe. By March the twelfth, we got an email saying that they were going to take over, and they were going to be able to put the books in order. At the meeting where Ms. Dean was terminated, it was said that they would have two weeks, and they are still working for the city. I would also mention, and I think Imogen Skrogan's doing an amazing job, this is in no disrespect to them whatsoever, but before, uh, the amount that was put on the agenda for tonight, which was fourteen thousand dollars plus for their monthly bill, we paid them ninety-one thousand dollars plus. Now, Mr. Bland said at the last council meeting that I have spent a lot of money, and the position with Mr. Moore being in the Human Resources Director's position, um, is fifty-six thousand dollars. That's for the year. In the meeting in July, it was discussed, not that it had- that his position had to be approved, it was that it had to fit in the budget. So again, things keep going back and forth, and different things are said. I asked then, when it was said that the positions need to be put back together, how do you put them back together? They're both two full-time positions, so I don't know how you put them back together. Even after that, when I had- when Mr. Williamson and I, and I did say, and I did mean that he and I did get together at my request about going over my budget, again, that line item that was given, I told him, when he said that he didn't want me to be set up for failure, that that line item sets me up for failure. Because, again, those two positions are two full-time positions. And it was even discussed with Imogen Skrogan's, that those two positions are two full-time positions. I just want to go on to say that now, I'm in a position to where I need to know, and that's another part of the clarification, what should happen moving forward, because I got a text message last week that said that Imogen Skrogan's, we could contract them to do the payroll. For those of you who come here during the day, you know that the Public Works Department has moved out of City Hall. I- I was not informed about that until it was brought up at a meeting, uh, between the- at the Eldorado Water Utilities and Public Works Department, that they would be moving out. Um, that was not something I guess I should have been privileged to, but I was not told, and I was not informed, but you could tell at the meeting that it had been discussed, that they would be moving out. Uh, when you talk about a lot of money being spent, that building purchased, them moving in, them buying new furniture to furnish that building and all of the utilities that goes with that, again, it was mentioned about me saying that Mr. Moore would have his own office. Well, as you can see, I guess most of the things that happen here in City Hall are being moved out of City Hall. There's no treasurer here, there's no Public Works Department here, and even to clarify that, there is no process to handle business as it should at Public Works right now. That is another clarification that I'd like to have, because the collector is here at City Hall. So permits and all of those things that require taking payment, well, payments are being given, but they're not being processed, because there's not a process in place yet where people can either pay money there and it be brought here on the same day. Since they've been there over a month, there has been once where money has been brought here. So the permits and things are being purchased, are being paid for, they're not being processed yet. It was also mentioned in the last finance com- not the last finance committee meeting, because they met on Tuesday, but the meeting prior to that, is that now things need to be- there needs to be more software purchased, so that those two departments, as far as the collectors and the Public Works Department, have a process in place. I just need for things to be clear, because with them moving out and having a good understanding about what the process is supposed to look like, that needs to be clarified. And again, the Public Works Director answers to the council, so I would assume that the council would be able to answer those questions. I do want to, because if the payroll, and it is now, is no longer payroll HR, uh, I think the budget that was put out says payroll personnel. So I do want everyone to understand, and when I say everyone, I mean the council, to understand what you're asking, when you say put those positions back together, and what you're saying that you don't want done, because if those are two full-time positions, if one person is supposed to do the job of two people, there are going to be some things that will not be done. That's why, when the position was held by the previous person, a lot of things went undone, because, again, those are two full-time positions. So with Mr. Moore being in that position right now, he's going to share, uh, what he's been doing, uh, since he's been in the position, what was not done before he got in the position, and I guess you all make the determination about what you don't want done moving forward. Mr. Moore?
Okay. Um, first of all, let- let me just kind of give some clarification on how HR office works. A typical HR office with an employee pool to the size that we have, with two hundred plus individuals, is usually ran by an HR assistant, an HR, um, specialist, an HR journalist, and an HR director. Those terms are not written the name. Those folks do totally different things. The goal of a HR director is to oversee all HR processes and make sure that those processes are done timely, uh, basis, on efficient basis, um, and all of that. So, um, with that, I'm- I'm not- let- let me say this, I'm not here to throw anybody previously, uh, under the bus, that doesn't- that doesn't do anything. But let me say this, I will say this. If you know what it takes to run an HR office professionally and professionally, uh, we wouldn't even be having a discussion, period. Because the reality is, there's so much that goes on in that office, uh, every day. Uh, everything, sometimes it's a moving, uh, target. Uh, let me give you, uh, an example. Uh, yesterday, workman's- you- you get somebody that's injured, you got to go through a workman's comp, uh, process, make sure all of that, uh, paperwork is done and done efficiently. And I'm telling you, I- I sent a person out, uh, a few weeks, months, a month ago, on an HR issue. He leaves the doctor, the doctor prescribed medicine, he goes to the pharmacy, and the pharmacy wouldn't give him the medicine. It wasn't given the medicine, because the city had an outstanding bill there that was ten years old that was never paid. I didn't get out and talk about it, but what I did, what I did do, that young- that young man had to pay out of his pocket, so what I did do is make sure that that was paid. It is, I mean, it- it was less than thirty dollars, but they wouldn't give him his medicine, because the bill wasn't paid. Now, we can point a whole lot of fingers and do a whole lot of talk about why that happened, but I tell you what, that won't happen again. Not on my watch. Won't happen. It won't happen when people come in and people are hired with invalid state-issue IDs. I just dealt with one yesterday. Nobody looks at this stuff. We just hire folks, we bring them in, and nobody checks them. And I know folks get sick of me every day, giving them paperwork back, because when it hit my desk, I expect it to be done right. I just went out last week and sat with a supervisor and walked through how onboarding paperwork ought to be done, not that he didn't want to do, he just didn't know. He didn't know. After, and that after me putting the whole process together, emailing that every supervisor, every department for two years, and I'm still dealing with people who won't fill out paperwork properly. You see, a lot of the problems that's happening around the city is because people been doing stuff piece me, or people been doing stuff because this is the way we've always done, and I do what I want to do, and nobody checks me. Well, let me tell you something. Now, folks remember when I bullied, railroaded, and intimidated folk? I'm not the one. I'm not the one. I wasn't looking for a job when it comes to me. I was growing when it came here, I was eating when it came here, I was doing all the things I do when I came here. So the city is not my source, this is just a resource. And we're talking about a salary, a fifty-six thousand. Let me tell you something, I made this salary in two thousand and one, when I was responsible for fifteen hundred folks, in two thousand and one. And today, in cities in Arkansas, uh, Human Resource Direct starts at seventy-five thousand dollars, what y'all know tonight? Seventy-five thousand dollars. And you're talking about that, I- I've heard people, uh, I guess my fact, I heard a conversation on the stage I'm going through, because I don't like it. Um, you got people who have come in this office and have given me horror stories about things that they were trying to get done and need help with, and they couldn't get it. Let me tell you something. We just had somebody go advocate for one of our employees that had a dick, that had been turned over to garnishment. Let me tell you something, people don't care how much you know it, till they know how much you care. A forty-six thousand dollar dick that wiped out. Another one, we say forty-two thousand dollars. A- another one who could get medicine, because insurance went paper, we advocated, you know what, that person's getting their medicine now. I had this discussion with somebody yesterday about the medication. These things are happening, and folks who don't know how, and I'm not knocking anybody, but you cannot take people off the street and put them in position of responsibility and authority and expect things to work properly. I'm not here to talk about the last person that was in the job, but no two, no one person. And I'm sitting here, a person that's got experience. Thank you. I'm sitting here, a person that's got experience, and know how hectic it is on a day-to-day basis, that's including still having to deal with the city's inventory. I heard- heard somebody make a statement, uh, uh, in a finance meeting, well, you know, um, you know, she did the forfeit step plan. I do that too. Well, you know, they farmed out the- the W two and the ACA. Let me tell you something, I provided that to Mr. Williamson, what they've been paying in years past. They've been paying thirty-five hundred dollars to get that done. I got it done for eight hundred. And we talking about that? We want to talk with them. Y'all excuse me, but I'm a little irritated. You mean to tell me, we sit here, we pay insurance on vehicles that we ain't had in three or four years? Who you think got that stock? I just went to the complex a week ago, on Tuesday. I said, there's nothing out there that we have, this inventory. So I- I- I go out, take the young man, Anthony Faris, we go out, and I took pictures and everything, and then went back, because we had to get dirty, change clothes, wrote down VINs, serial numbers, and all that, and trying to find value to stuff. I just yesterday, just yesterday, sent a title to vehicles that we'd been selling without title. Matter of fact, they sold that one person in Houston, Texas, seven vehicles, and didn't have a title for either one of them. How you think you got it? Here's more witness, on his own gas, that I've done for two years, and asked the city for it now. Because I get paid to serve. I understand what that looks like. And then it's set in a restaurant on Friday morning, and you're a city, city councilman, and Eldorado says this to another individual that he was sitting there talking to. Well, you know, half of the time, they don't show up for work down there. I want you to look at me in my eyes, tell me I don't show up for work. You say it. Tell me that I don't show up for work.
If you- if you actually heard what I said?
I actually heard what you say, I wrote it down.
Let me tell you a little something. Uh, uh, no, wait. You- you paused. Mr. Moore, it's not your place.
Oh, he- he, yeah. None of the rules are being followed anyway.
Let me say this, it's not your place to talk to me in a condescending fashion, I'm a man just like you are, you got a bad head, but when it talks down the pole, I'm not the guy. I was a man when I walked this here, I'm going to be a man the day I walk out. You're not going to disrespect me, and that's been part of the problem here. We want to disrespect, discredit, dismiss, disparage, discourage. We want to do all of that. Every- and, and I'm sitting here, and had said a whole lot, but I'm telling you something. See, y'all bringing that plot, the pitch fight, I'm pretty prepared to win it. I'm not- I'm- I'm not here to play games. You do whatever you want to do, but I'm going to tell you something. We doing a disservice to the employees of this city, we doing a disservice to the citizens of this city by playing all of these gotcha games. And it's childish, it's immature. I mean, it's dim-witted, dogtardic, dogish, whatever words you want to use, devilish, it's all of that. And then we want to sit here and hide behind these. But we can't- we- we can't continue to do this. You- you're not going to tell me, we're never going to make it. Li- being liars, backbiters, two-faced, double-tongued, double-minded, hypocritical cowards.
Right.
If you want to talk to me, be a man, be a woman, and come talk to me. I'm not hard to find.
I agree.
Mayor, we need- we need to- we need to come to the end of this, Mayor.
Um, we're clarifying.
This is not city council anymore.
It is, it is.
Mr. Bland?
It is, it is, Mr. Bland.
I'll say this, with every capacity, that the mayor or anybody ask me to serve him, I try to do it with professionalism, proficiency, distinction, and respect. First of all, I'm not going to bring any shame on myself, on my family, and certainly not going to bring it on the city. I'm not going to do that. Now, if people get into, you know, uh, my name comes up in a lot of conversations, don't know why, but it does, but that's fine. But I'm not going to let somebody just continue, uh, to misrepresent, make this position was already created. What happened, there was a change in title. Now, you took first, you- you take individuals, because they friends with folk, and you make them Human Resource Administrators, you make them, you make them this, that, them Human Resources administrators, you make them friends, you make them this, that, and the other because they're related to somebody or they're friends with somebody. And we want to talk about pay? We got the same problem to a greater degree that the county had, whether the Johansson group did that study for them. I already know what the study going to show, because I see it every day. I mean, you talking about my salary, you got folks in here grossly overpaid for positions that they're in. I mean, how do you just, how, how, how does one person get a twenty-one percent increase on a year? No promotion.
Mayor, is this going to come to an end?
When he's finished, Mr. Bland. When he's finished. Well, Mr. Bland, if you.
He accused me of everything in the world.
He accused you.
He accused me of everything in the world. Y'all, he's used, y'all have done this, y'all done that.
He accused you?
He sure did. He's accused the council of doing all this stuff. I heard it.
I've been accused.
You didn't accuse me of anything?
I said, I've been accused.
I didn't say that. Did you accuse me of doing all these things? I'm Billy Bland, you said y'all.
He did not say Billy Bland. He did not say Billy Bland. When he mentioned a council member, he addressed them specifically.
Was I included in y'all?
Sir, do you serve, you serve on this council?
I do serve on this council.
I make a motion adjourned.
I second it.
Second.
Now y'all know how I feel. Now y'all know how I feel, right? Now y'all know how I feel in the U.S. when you know, when it's things.
I just want to say on your way out, sometimes we have to look at the truth, whether you want to accept it or not, the truth still stands. And people say things because they want to save them and there are no repercussions, just like people saying that people are not here and working at City Hall. So when you want to know the truth about something, go to the source.
I would like to make statements.
The meeting has been adjourned?
I'm going to make a statement.
Okay, but the meeting, I'm just saying the meeting has been adjourned.
This was not fair to Dan, this was the second time.
No, no ma'am, it is not, no ma'am, it is not, it is not.
You asked if you talked to him and with Scruggans, the reasons for that high amount.
Ms. Board, I'm not sure, I'm not sure who hears this, the meeting is adjourned. You don't have to explain it to me, it's the citizens who need it to be explained. I didn't say seventy-five thousand dollars. What did, what did, what did you hear, seventy-five thousand dollars?